Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'd start with roll call.
Kim Bailey.
Here.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Maria Davies.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Ryan Westcott is absent. Kim York.
Here.
All right, if you'd join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. And I'd like to start this meeting with a moment of silence for the student we lost this week. So if you'd join me in that.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, we are now on recognitions.
We have a nice full crowd this evening because we have some wonderful students that we would like to recognize. And as I call your name, I would invite you to come forward and receive your certificate and shake hands and take a photo with our board members. Our first recognition is for a first grader at Stonegate. Her name is Addie Comagius. And Addie was a participant in the 2017 Missouri PTA Reflections Contest. And she received first place for her submission in the pre-K through second grade film production around the theme, "What is Your Story?" Congratulations, Addie. Now, as the Missouri winner in this category, Addie's submission will go on to the national award. And we'll hopefully find out in the next month or so whether or not she's received that as well. But winning any statewide contest is always very impressive, and congratulations. Thanks for coming. All right, our next group that we want to recognize are state champions in Special Olympics Girls Basketball in the five-on-five Unified Sports Team Competition. And I think a few of these names are familiar from last year's three-on-three champion-winning team. I'll ask the students to come forward as I call your name. First is Carolyn Elkins. Next is Emma Gudenkauf. Next is Ashley Lindsay. Their team also consists of some volunteers who play with them, with our Special Olympians, as unified partners. First is Kayla Hughes. All right. What about Savannah Alvarado? Yep, okay. I know their coaches are here. We'd like them to come forward and join their students. Coach Kara Hornbeck. And Coach Katie Howlett. Now, as they're posing for their photo, I would mention that this wasn't the only team that did well at the state contest. I think we had a team place second and maybe another one placed third or something to that effect. So we have a tremendous Special Olympics program here, thanks to the fine coaches and all the volunteers that help with the program. And these girls are obviously very successful at basketball. So congratulations once again. All right, next up, we want to recognize a couple of our high school seniors who have made it well into the process for National Merit Scholarships. I think we've had them up here as semifinalists before, and now they have been designated as finalists. First, we have Nick Caskey. And we also have Jacob Schreiner. So Jacob couldn't be here this evening. He has already received notice of an award that he's receiving through this program, a scholarship award. Those notices come out throughout the course of the summer, so I'd say there's a good chance Nick's going to get noticed at some point as well. So we're planning on it. You know, obviously, Nick's involved in a lot of things. If you used to watch our robotics program, band program, and even some theater work that I think he's done. So congratulations on this designation. We're talking the top 1% nationwide that's in this category or less. So thank you for coming, Nick. All right, next up, we have winners of their division in the Greater Kansas City Science and Engineering Fair. They had a first place in the category of microbiology, which I know very little about. So obviously, very impressive. We have two students on the team that I would invite forward. First is Kayden Stossberg. And the other person is Tyler Day. I know their teachers here as well. And I think, obviously, being first place in a Kansas City metro area science fair is very impressive. And I'm sure if they told us about their topic, we would be all overwhelmed with how complex it was. So I'm not even going to ask because I'm afraid I may not understand it fully. So thanks for coming, ladies. Very much congratulations. All right, we have two others we want to recognize this evening. The Missouri Skills USA Leadership and Skills Conference is held every year, and we have participants from a variety of our career programs that participate in that contest. And we had a team from our area of students that go to Cass Career Center that placed first place in the category of welding. First, we have Nathan Crum. And we have Blake Vrimm. Now, while they're getting their photo taken, I believe there was a third team member from the Belton School District that was also in their combined team. And I'll just say that I'm pretty sure all Ray Pick's students probably carried the load for that. I'm just speculating. These guys are nodding, so maybe that's true. I'm not sure. But certainly want to congratulate them for being statewide winners in their category. It's definitely a skill that there's a lot of demand for, and I think these guys have a pretty good career to look forward to in this area, if that's what you're hoping to pursue. So thanks for coming this evening. Congratulations. That concludes our recognition portion. And you are all welcome to stay, but you are not required to. And so if you would like to go ahead and leave, now would be the time. Thank you so very much for coming.
I know. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the consent items. Is there a motion on the consent items?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Did anyone sign up for public comments?
No, they did not.
All right, informational items. Is there someone from Insight Design Studio?
Yeah, Patrick Smith is here this evening to give us the update. And I believe he's got some friends from Crossland Construction along with him.
As you can see, brought a few people with us. This is from Crossland Construction. I want to introduce the -- say it to Mike. The guys have been working on the job for you very diligently, doing such a great job. Got Tim Carson, Nick Kelly, and Corey Howell. So these guys are out here every day doing a lot of hard work and doing a really good job. So I wanted to make sure I recognized those guys and all the good work they're doing. And we'll get to the pretty pictures. We can get the --
There goes.
There you go. So this is -- we usually start with the renovation areas. We actually -- one of the big things that just happened is we -- Crossland was able to take control of the old choir room, the green room and the makeup area, as well as the back hallway. It's actually not shaded in here, but the back hallway that was the shop storage room, that's all been turned over to Crossland. And they have been working very diligently in those areas to pick up a lot of work and try to get ahead of the summer schedule a little bit that has quite a bit to be done. There's concrete trenching going on for some underground plumbing, blockwork, opening up areas for new doorways into the band room, as well as a lot of overhead work, getting any duct work revisions that need to take place, structural, Joyce work that needs to go in to account for some additional snow load, et cetera. In the other areas, there is -- most of the flooring has gotten in place, the carpet and the VCT looks really nice. As well as throughout the school, there was a number of trophy cases, and those were all -- the school district, actually, was able to clear a lot of that out and let Crossland, their subcontractors, get in and paint them all, touch them back up. And then we'll start to fill those back in as part of the new scheme, painting scheme that eliminates some of the blue color that's been around the school. Case work is going to be installed next week in a lot of the renovation areas as well. And then they're all really getting prepped for the summer phase, which just is around the corner, which is all your public areas, your hallways, your commons. That's going to get all new VCT patterns, which is the tile that's going on the floor. And if you've been through the school lately, you've seen that new hallway that went in at the initial phases. It's all going to mimic that pattern that has the yellows and the grays in it. It's going to look really nice. We'll start to look at some of the imagery of the renovations. This is -- so that's the image on the left is what was the old shop storage. There's a lot of wood back there. So you can see they've cleared all that out. You can even see there's some new concrete on the floor. That's where they had trenched out for some new plumbing. And this is the doorway and a window that will go from what was once piano storage is now going to be the band office that will look into the new band room. This is the -- what will be the new main administration and attendance entry. That window looks to the main canopy, if you can see that columns outside the main entry. This is where everybody will come to check in. This is the sped room. You can see there's both tile and carpet. This tile area is where there'll be two kitchen stations. And then the carpet area is the classroom side. And then there's behind where the picture's taken is a full classroom size with all the carpet as well. So you can kind of see different level of finishes going in in the different areas. And then here is another classroom. This is actually a sped resource room. And then this is, I believe that looks like it's the -- yep, that is the new AD office suite that's in that area, which is right off the commons. That last picture was taken right in there. As we move to the new construction, there's, if you've driven by lately, the metal panel is going up at both the new front -- the new entry over on the new addition, as well as around the dome parapet. Inside the dome, duct work and sprinklers have been installed. And the ceilings are getting ready to be installed in the dome as well. There's going to be a ceiling with laying tile that'll go over the gymnasium, kind of mimic the outline of the court, and then as well over where the bleachers on one side will go and for future bleachers on the other side. And that really helps with the sound in the dome. If you happen to be in there, right now, it's a lot very loud, echoey. Once those ceiling tiles get dropped in, it really calms that space down. Painting and, I guess, case work, the next two items, those are really starting to progress. They've more been starting in this area, which is the new art rooms and some classrooms, and it's kind of working its way counterclockwise. The case work is falling slightly behind the painting. The painters come in first with their main coats. They'll still come back with final coat, but it's working its way counterclockwise. And most of this area in here is painted, and then they'll move to the second floor as well. The elevator is going to be installed, start to begin being installed next week, which goes right in here. And a skylight and the stair treads around that elevator were installed already, and I've got a really neat picture of how that looks coming up. Majority of the drywall in that new main addition is installed. It's really starting to take shape. You can feel the space as you're in there. It's really starting to be neat. And then the drywall in the band room will start here in the coming weeks. So we've got our drone photos that you can see the band room right there and the new addition. These were taken a little bit ago. The metal panel hadn't quite been starting to be installed at that point, but I do have a photo that shows the metal panel being installed. You can see the -- these are little study rooms off the media center, but the main two-story glass volume space that looks into that media center. And as we work our way around towards the north side, the two-story brick addition as well, and you can see the dome in the background. And then as we look from the east side, looking back west, everything is really -- we're closed in, waterproofed, and so it's really the finishing touches on the exterior and getting the interior up to speed. So here you can start to see the metal panel being installed along the main addition. And again, these mimic the rendering that you'll see at the end again, where there's a little darker color. There's a two-tone. And then we've got all the nice masonry that's been installed on the tower as well that will have a nice, big RP logo on that tower. This is on the two-story beyond, and then the art rooms that have -- the flooring's already finished. The painting is about done, and the case work's getting ready to be installed as well. And then it's hard to see a little bit, but you can start to see the metal panel going on the dome out there. That was a mock-up, onsite mock-up, that we all looked at and approved, and it looks really nice. This is inside the dome. As you can see, the duct work. This was actually from, I believe, a week and a half ago. The duct work's done by now, but you can see it really starting to -- that duct work follows the outline of the court. So, sorry. This is the extension of the patio commons. So this will be -- there'll be additional tables in this area as the cafeteria, and those are the two entry doors from the inside going into the dome gymnasium. This is as you would enter the main -- the addition on the west side, over by the metal panel going in, as you enter and come in that hallway. It's hard to see there's pallets right in front of you, but that's the main hallway heading east. And over here on the left is your media center, and you can start to see the upper level. There's hallways there and there, and you can see the learning stairs. That'll be a great place for kids to congregate and really act as a commons for a lot of kids to hang out. This is from upstairs, looking back down. So we were standing about here in the last image, looking this way. And you can see in the background, there's -- that's the stair. I've got a close-up photo here in a little bit with the elevator will be right there. But that is an entry into the admin that's right there, and the librarian's office is right there. That's actually glass into the media production. So where the -- I believe it's RPTV takes place, there'll be windows into that room, and they've got a production room that looks into that, that has a -- will have a backdrop be really nice. So you can see the nice stair tower. This is the elevator tower, the doors to the elevator on the other side of it. But you can see how the stair starts at this end, wraps around, and goes up to the second level. And the tower has that same masonry that was on the exterior inside, and it goes all the way up to the new skylight that's in place. And there'll be a big light that hangs -- there's two of these. The image cuts it off. The other one's right there. Big circular light that'll hang from that atrium space, and it's really neat. And there's these new stair treads look really nice. They're nice durable concrete, really help dress up that space. Those are all the images I've got right now. Are there any questions?
I got to do a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago with Dr. Montes, and it was phenomenal to walk through there and see all that in progress.
And now, as all the drywall and everything's going up --
And the culinary kitchens are amazing.
Oh, yeah. I should have added photos. All the hoods are in for all those kitchens. And like I said, that drywall going up really helps form the space. And each time you walk through there now, we're out here every week, and it changes daily now. It's really a sight to be seen. So these guys are working hard, and it'll be good. We're on the home stretch. Nick might disagree, but we're on the home stretch.
I'm very glad that you brought some people from Crossland this evening. It's nice to have you all here. We don't often get a chance to see you face-to-face and say thank you, but thank you. The work you're doing is amazing. The project has just been clicking along. You know, every other month, we have reports showing all these great things happening, and it's just kind of materializing in front of our eyes. And I know that's a lot of work, a lot of different projects going on at the same time, and you're managing to do it while school's on and buses are there and cars are there and kids are there. And it's great. So thank you very much.
And I did get interviewed by one of the KPTV gentlemen, and his first comment was, "Are we getting rid of this blue tile?" Yes, I'm getting rid of the blue tile, I told him.
Yep, that's good. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming. All right, we're moving on to action items. First person up would be Dr. Brian Petten Gill.
I would like to ditto Patrick's comments and compliments of Crossland. Work very closely with Corey and Nick and Tim, and they're doing a great job. Crossland's been great to work with. We do have a few change orders to go through this month, and only doing these every 60 days, they kind of pile up. But I do have 10 change orders from Crossland to present to you, and I have one additional from our Progressive Electronics, our AV package. A good one, we always like to start with the fun ones. This is a nice credit. This will be a savings of a little over $60,000. Working with Crossland and Scott Dobson and our architects came to the realization that we had oversized the meters and could get by without using a three-inch meter. And so when we went to a two-inch meter in one location and one and a half inch in another location, that made it -- allowed us not to build the vaults. So now they're just in kind of residential meter pits instead of vaults. So that comes with other fun things. We no longer have to run power supply out there to run sump pumps, and so that's a great savings and took a team effort to get that done.
That one's been in the works for like three or four months, so we were glad to get it to where it is. It started out with just replacing steel vaults with concrete vaults, and then as we progressed through and talked about other options, it just kept getting to be a better credit all the way along. And Scott took a lot of effort involved in that to make it happen too, along with the design team.
Can we clap?
Yeah, that's good. It's good to have a good credit because some of these are not going to be.
Well, I started with that one. The next one's also been in the works for several months, going back and forth and working closely with our partners. Just a lot of different -- you know, when you take on a project this size, especially with remodeling, there's some surprises that will come up. One of those has been just dealing with all the different locker demo and painting that we didn't necessarily plan to do. We were doing duct work in the 600 wing, but that's going to require some ceiling replacement. Some of it's positive, reusing a concession door, working -- one of Nick's finds for us was allowing us to reuse a concession door that was still in really good shape and saving us money there. And then we had some existing doors we moved around. And then a little bit when you're transitioning from an existing facility into an addition, there's some vestibule demo and some areas that you have to work on. So when you take all those and put them together, that change order is going to be an additional cost of $19,850. And in your package, in your board packets, you have all the details, so you can go kind of down into the weeds as far as you want to on these. Another really big one that we've also been working on for quite some time, the weight room and the locker room facilities, when very originally when this was being designed, were not part of the blueprints. But since we want all the fire alarm in the addition, in the existing facility and the addition to all to talk to each other and make sure that our kids are safe, we have to go through and we had to do a change order to add all and update all the fire alarms in that entire south edge with the weight room and the locker rooms under it. So that is a pretty big change order and an additional cost of $57,736. Again, you see why I started with the vaults. All right, change order 17. We took all the electrical issues that we're currently dealing with and kind of clumped those together. So between some art rooms, labs, life skills room, and a couple other scrubs, we have a cost there in the electrical side. Mechanical side in our freshman entry, which is that library entry that Patrick talked about, we had to do a duct reconfiguration due to a beam conflict. We also had a unit heater that was scheduled to be on the wall, but it was going to be on a glass wall, so we had to move it around. So there's some additional costs there. Looking at several of our different finishes, the VCT, which is your tile floor, was scheduled to go into the kitchen area, and we went a different route with that just to stay within code. We don't want to put VCT in prep areas, so we were just doing an epoxy there. That was a savings. One of the pictures you may have noticed in the life skills classroom that Patrick talked about was a carpet that hadn't shown up before. That was a subtle change. We did that because we didn't want to have too much stimulation in there. So there was a small fee there. We're also going to use that fee -- or, sorry, that style carpet in the freshman -- I call it the freshman lounge up there in that glassed area upstairs and in that hallway. Plumbing side, obviously, when you're building something this size, you're going to have a few Joyce conflicts, and we're going to have to reroute some plumbing. There was a big credit for iWash stations in our science rooms. We went with a different style. There was a water heater, again, something Nick helped us discover that we really didn't need to add, so that was a credit. We had to move an ice machine around, some LSP panels in the science room, kind of controlling the teaching station. And Tim actually and Scott worked together to get us a credit for our downspout boots. There was a big cast iron thing that just wasn't necessary, so that was a nice credit as well. There's a security office. What it was, was a little office that was going to be added outside the entrance to the commons. As we looked through and discussed things, it's going to be about 100-square-foot office. And talking with Stephen Miller and the administrative team, we really think that we can meet all of our needs without that office there. And we don't want to spend money on something that we may not use as often. So that was a savings of $18,660 to go a different route. It's going to open it up, so that'll be glassed in, but there won't be an office jetted into that entryway.
Aren't we going to use those as a security area there, though?
The campus safety person can still be stationed there during checkout at passing time for the A-plus students as they leave, but otherwise, he won't be there on a regular basis. We still have a security office on the other side of the commons that the SROs will be using.
Okay. One of our other change orders that's been something we've been discussing since the beginning of the project is we have this brand-new, beautiful building. We had that ephesus going up, and we were still going to have some burnt orange downspouts hanging off the side of it. We looked at just taking them down. One of the biggest components was we want that ephesus to be continuous across there instead of budding up against the downspouts. So looking at it, it was not that much more expensive to just put brand-new ones up than it was to take them down and put them back up. And so after a lot of conversations and meetings, we are going to recommend a change order. It's an additional cost of $25,711, and that will be 360-degree view of the building. We'll all have brand-new downspouts that will then match with the new construction.
And you can see on the new addition already, it's more of the brown, dark brown, bronzy type color, and that is getting all the rest of the downspouts on the existing building to match that color. A little more modern look to it.
Another one that Mr. Cruz and Mr. -- excuse me, Mr. Miller have been pushing for pretty hard on. They really like the idea of having a nice sign and entry in our commons entry doorway. So that will be lit. It's a 3D sign, and it allows our competitors and our visitors to identify where to enter. It's kind of a darker entrance, and so that lights that up a little bit. We were able to mitigate the cost of this. There was some signage that was planned, you know, it was going to say Panther Pride between the dome and the patio commons on the north side, which isn't an entry we were going to use. So we were able to delete some of those to make this more affordable. delete some of those to make this more affordable. And then, just as we worked through the, the internal signage, you know, there was a place that said serving, you know, things like that, that we decided we weren't necessarily needed. So, all in all, that was, when we put all those together, that was an additional cost of $5,541.
Did we address the big sign out front in any of this?
We have not. We would, we're gonna do that as a separate project later on. We've got power out there, so we can, we can do that. It's just a matter of deciding what we want. And my guess is we're not gonna want a digital display sign, is my guess. Those tend to have issues, so.
Yes.
Very good. Jumping over to our AV package from Progressive Electronics, this is our second change order. It's got two PRs in it. One is we're getting a refund on some brackets. Once we started actually seeing things in place, it was nice doing the, part of the remodel first and putting them in there, and we kind of discovered some issues. And we want our brackets to be able to tilt back and forth to make a better view for the students. And so, we bought our own brackets, and so we get a refund on the bracket, several of the brackets that they had originally purchased. There's two rooms that we have decided not to put AVs into, and then there's one that we decided to add. So, when you did all that, it's a savings of $3,175. Alright, big picture. We've had 28 change orders so far. In Phase 1, that was Lily Construction. There was three change orders. In Phase 2, which is Crossland Construction, that's the major component. This, we did 14 through 23 today, so that all adds up to an additional cost of $60,000. Phase 2, we've had two change orders with an additional cost of just $2,200. And so, when you look at the original bid package, the change orders, both that you've approved in the past and what I've presented tonight, there's about an 85, almost $86,000 increase to the original budget, which is a third of 1% increase to the original budget.
And we had planned on somewhere between $200,000 and $250,000 worth of potential in our design budget, just knowing that there would be some of these issues. So, we're on good track this far into the project to have used that much so far. And a lot of it has to do with the credits that the teams worked on as we found other things that cost more.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's amazing in a project this size to have managed it that well. And you beat me to the number. I was sitting there doing my math to see what it was. Yeah, and all the hard work that went into finding those credits too, so.
Are there any questions? Alright, is there a motion to approve the change orders as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Passes. Next on the action item is the middle school technology grant application, and that'll be Dr. Crystal Barr.
Good evening. In January, I was up here requesting permission to submit a grant for our high school career enhancement grant, and that allowed us to expand, hopefully will allow us to expand, our Project Lead the Way offerings. So, tonight, I'm back with two additional grants. These are the technology and engineering grants. They are offered through DESI. They are what's considered 50-50 grants. So, whatever you put in for your budget, if you, whatever you receive, the state expects us to pay 50%, and they will pay 50%. So, it's a pretty good deal. There is a grant for East Middle and one for South Middle. The grant for East Middle will allow us to expand those Project Lead the Way offerings to include medical detectives and energy in the environment. And so, that's kind of more of our science biomedical leg, which will feed into the high school biomedical leg of Project Lead the Way. And then, the South Middle School Grant, little larger because it is allowing us to not only do medical detectives and energy in the environment, but then also have comparable programs in engineering through automation, robotics, design and modeling, and then the computer science offerings, which is app creators and computer science for innovators. So, answering any questions you may have, and if you don't have any, requesting permission to submit the grant.
The board saw these in action, and we took a little tour back at the beginning of the school year. And we went to East Middle School and saw the, some of those classrooms. So, it's replicating that and adding to it basically for South Middle and, and both, and at East Middle, so.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the submission of the technology and engineering grants for South Middle School and East Middle School for the 2017-18 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All the, any further discussion? All those in favor? It passes. Thank you, Dr. Barr. Next thing on the action items is summer school application, Dr. Al Volker.
Good evening, everybody. I'm with you this month to talk about summer school again. I already presented the overview to you in previous months. Now, we're just at that technical process. We've gotta complete the application and submit it to the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by May 1st. So, we are here with the overview of the summer school program in more technical form. So, if you want to go ahead and open up that application, be fine. It just lists our three elementary schools. That's absolutely estimated enrollment in there. It allows you to estimate the enrollment, lists the start and end date, our grade span, the days that we are in session. Remember, that's a four-day-a-week program. It then goes on to list our middle school, which is now 6-8 at Ray Peck East Middle School, and three facets of the high school program, the enrichment portion, the credit recovery, and then the summer fitness portion. So, that is our summer offering, very, very similar to last year. And as I've already presented to you, this is just the application to move forward that process. So, I'd, I'd ask that our board, please allow us to do so.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the summer school application as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And it passes. Thank you, Dr. Volker.
Thank you. I think I get to stay.
Yes, yes. Next is early childhood tuition rate proposal.
Absolutely. Thanks again. We have been talking about this for a number of months. And in the planning stage with hiring our director and with Shepfield, Shepford, and talking with my department, we've just had a lot of planning. And we're now to the stage where we are going to roll out our tuition model to our constituents. The early childhood tuition model for pre-K presented below is designed to provide an affordable and accessible early childhood education to patrons in a fiscally responsible manner for our district. Current market pricing and district budget considerations were used when determining program pricing. It is customized to ensure that it meets the needs of our families in the tuition model. Parents are able to select either a four or five day early childhood program, and also determine if they would like to, their child to attend full or half day. Prices vary based on the amount of time families are accessing the district program. You'll notice a sliding scale we've been talking about is included in order to open access to families who might not otherwise be able to access high-quality early childhood based on that reduced, you'll see a reduced rate and a free lunch eligible rate as well. So, we can open access to as many as possible. Any questions about our early childhood proposed tuition model?
Is this available to our teachers, or is there a reduced rate for them?
We have been discussing that. It has not been decided. We, we do not have a reduced rate for teachers currently. We also need to talk about specifically their, if we have multiple children. It's common to have a multiple child, you know, possibly a 10% for the second child or so on. This is our standard rate. We do not have and have not yet determined, this time we don't have a reduced teacher rate or staff rate.
I think we're kind of building the program this first year, and I think things like that will be what we want to evaluate as we move forward. I think there's opportunities there, but we want us, we want to make sure we get it off the ground in a financially stable way if we can, so.
What kind of feedback have you been getting on this from people that you've talked to so far?
Well, I think it's important to note, we haven't talked about, and this plan doesn't present the high school child development class, which I think is a component that is a, a free component. It's a much shorter component. It acts where students, our high school students are taking high school child development. People in our, members of our community are gonna take their, you know, four-year-old there for a couple hours of the day. And that is a free program to access. So, I think people have said, "Well, you have no free offerings." That hasn't been discussed yet. It hasn't been presented. And we had a staff member who, congratulations to her, retired, who was our high school child development teacher. And so, we have since had another member of our family consumer science department agree to take that position. So, we'll be ready to roll that information out to our parents soon. So, the feedback we've sent, I've had is, do we have any component that's not a fee-based structure? And we do have the high school child development still yet to announce.
Just much more limited in terms of.
Oh yeah, it's definitely much more limited. It would be, the curriculum would be a little bit different scope for sure. It, it's a much more limited program.
And we did have over 90 students represented at the roundup evening. So, we've done that one time, and that was just the first shot, if you will, and had a very good turnout for that.
See, and what are, what's the feedback from the parents that know about the fees? Because I've talked to several parents and even a few teachers that are afraid we're gonna lose some kids that really need to be in this preschool, but can't even afford maybe the $40 just because they're really scraping to make ends meet. And we're gonna...
Let me share a thought.
Because we don't have the free day and the free days anymore.
Right. I will share with you that when we looked at this originally, and again, this has kind of been six months in the works, if you will, if they are eligible for the free lunch rate through that eligibility process, they're almost certainly also eligible for some state childcare subsidies as well that would cover the rest of the fee, so to speak. So, if they're really at that level of need, we think they, if they're willing to go through some of the paperwork that's required, they can get the rest of it taken care of. That's, that's kind of how we went about that model in trying to set that up.
And we are currently pursuing their specific professional development your staff has to undergo and specific, just trainings that they have to do. So, you're eligible to, to receive that state aid, and we are going through that process. So, we can offer families who do qualify that opportunity to apply for state aid and then...
So, there'll be somebody to help them kind of at least start the paperwork process.
And we did have some people talk about that.
With not just parents, but even a few teachers that are in our district that teach at the elementary level and know the value of our program, but they're just afraid we're gonna lose some of those kids. And then, when they start kindergarten, they're gonna be even further behind if they don't, you know.
We had this exact discussion early on and internally. And I think our thought was, if we left it at zero or very near zero, they wouldn't even bother going, filling out the paperwork. And then, we would be subsidizing it completely, whereas this puts a little more ownership in their hands to, to pursue that subsidy to cover it, where it wouldn't have to necessarily come out of their pocket. So, and we'll help as much as we can to make that possible.
And then, on the flip side, I've had a few parents, you know, well, I could drive them closer to home and not take them, you know, I could, if I'm gonna have to pay, then I can go somewhere closer to home.
I think the important thing to know and, and to remember is the quality of teaching staff that we're able to provide our community. I think when we're looking at the, the training and the education that our early childhood education teachers have, there's certifications, there are certified teachers. The ability at this cost ratio to provide that high-quality level of education, when you're looking at possibly qualifying for a half a day program that's five days a week and that's $25.
Yeah.
So, we really have designed this with the idea, we want to be fiscally responsible on all sides to our community patrons that support us, that don't have early childhood students, and those that do. So, there is a balance in there. And I think it's important as we grow our program to maintain that balance.
And we're, we're not intending to be in direct competition with some of our well-established providers now. So, we're really wanting to focus on the students who are not getting access now. And I think through the variety of mechanisms available, we can, we can provide that. So, if we were to set our rates real low, I think we would have another constituency that'd say, "Hey, that's not fair to us as private providers." And that's not our goal. We want them, we want every kid in the community to be served, whether through us or another high-quality provider that we have in the community, so.
Good questions. Any other questions?
Alright, is there a motion?
I move to approve the tuition rate for the early childhood program as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is musical instrument bids.
Well, I'm not normally up here for these bids, so I'm kind of excited to be doing this one. We have, as a process of growing, having two middle schools, obviously, the instruments that are needed at the middle school level vary and are slightly more complex than the entrance, instruments needed at the intermediate level. So, as we go to middle schools, it was important to go through our request for proposals, an RFP process. The administration did that and working with our band department through that to ensure that we went to bid and got the highest quality and the best instrument, instruments for our students in our band program. Proposals were received from six vendors. Five completed that process. They were all considered in the evaluation. Vendors were asked to give a price for the unit and the total proposed cost. They asked to be delivered by July 10th of this summer, so we could get started and use those. So, we could use them at summer band camp and in summer practices. Vendors were also asked to describe their quality control procedures over delivery of the items and any services or warranty provided in addition to the manufacturer's warranty. Although their bid was not the lowest bid, Meyer Music was the only bidder to provide a firm commitment to deliver all the items by July 10th, and the only bidder to provide any service or quality control procedures upon delivery. They then promised us to deliver them, set them up, and play test them to ensure that they are working in proper order. This will ensure they perform at the bid price and they're ready for students right away. And that was very important to us. Although the bidders would ship the items resulting in potential additional cost and delays if they're anywhere satisfactory. Meyer Music is also, and I think this is important to note, our only bidder from Missouri and really our only local bidder in this process. And we have worked with them a number of years and believe that that provides us a level of consistency and trust in their product that we just didn't have with the other bids. So, based on all that information, the administration included that the bid from Meyer Music represents the lowest and best bid, the key being best, and recommends the Board of Education approve the purchase of these musical instruments from Meyer Music. Does anybody have any questions about our instrument bid process?
I really liked that they were gonna inspect it when you get here to make sure they're working right.
Our band department liked a lot of things in this bid process that Meyer Music was willing to do and ensure so that those instruments were of the highest quality and ready for our students when they got here.
So, do they not warranty any of them at all? It looks like, or they're, they just didn't mention it at all?
I just wasn't a part of that bid process. I think they have, we have worked with them for a number of years in taking care of our instruments and shipping them back. And, and they've just done a really good job with that.
Okay.
And I think our band department would tell you the same thing.
Would they be willing to do the strings too?
Well, that'll be a different conversation, but you never know.
Are there any other questions? Alright, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid for musical instruments from Meyer Music.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Volker. Next is the 2017-18 salary schedule and benefits. Looks like there's gonna be.
Couple of us.
Okay, alright.
Well, I'm happy to present the recommendations from Team Ray Peck in regards to salary and benefits for this coming school year. Mrs. Hatfield will then be giving you some additional information on, in regards to the benefits that are being recommended. Team Ray Peck is comprised of around 40 staff members, which represent each building and each department. And we meet monthly to ensure continuous feedback is always occurring among all of our district staff. As you are aware, the, the majority of our operating budget is dedicated to salary and benefits of staff. So, through substantial analysis of available, available information, a list of priorities was developed, discussed, ranked, revisited, and revisited, and reranked.
And revisited.
And revisited. You know, and this year, facing the significant insurance rate hikes, we, Team Ray Peck had a challenge in front of them on how to deal with that. And as each month progressed, more information was collected, disseminated, and collaborated upon as it became available. Attached to the suggested item, you will find a list of recommendations and propose, proposed salary schedules for the 17-18 school year. And I'll just kind of walk through those schedules, or the, what those reflect. First, we wanted to make sure our Team Ray Peck is recommending to provide a step increase for all staff on the, on the 17-18 salary schedule if a step is available on that schedule. That's a cost estimate of $627,000. Furthermore, Team Ray Peck wants to provide, wants to ensure that we provide a board-paid health insurance plan for eligible employees, which that's inclusive of a 15.09% rate increase for, and that's for the qualified high deductible health insurance plan as the base. It's a cost estimate of $737,500 in addition. We also looked at including prescription plan modifications. They incentivize mail order and preferred pharmacies. That's actually a savings for us. If, since we'll take that on, that's a $43,000 savings to maintain our board-paid dental insurance plan. And that's, that's a cost increase of $14,300. Finally, get rid of, get caught back up on that last half step that's been eluding us. So, Team Ray Peck is recommending to provide the additional half step for any staff frozen in the in 2011, 2012, if that step is available on the cost, or on the schedule. That's an estimate of $108,700. And finally, we would like, our Team RAPEC would like to recommend a teacher salary schedule base increase of $200. And then that gets, by index, that will affect all salaries of everyone in the district. That's a cost estimate of $176,800. With that being said, that's a total additional cost of the compensation plan being recommended is $1,621,300. With that being said, district administration is comfortable recommending to the Board approve the aforementioned schedules for next year as they represent our continued effort to hire and retain high-quality and highly effective staff. But to learn more about the benefit packages, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hatfield.
As she's coming forward, I'll just comment on a couple of things there. And Maria Davies and Susan Edmondson were the board members on Team RAPEC. Those last two items about getting that last half-step recovered and then also trying to do some improvement to the basis, it was about a split feedback from our whole staff about which was the higher priority. And, and we're to the point now where we think we need to do both and that's why we're bringing to you a recommendation that's got a little more cost to it than what we had talked about in our previous work session. So just based on your feedback in the past, we knew that you would be supportive or hoped you would be supportive of that approach. So Lisa will talk a little more about the benefits themselves.
We have a document that's provided. It's several pages. I apologize for its length, but it summarizes both the benefits that are paid by the district to our eligible employees as well as those benefits that are voluntary or optional for the employees to purchase on their own. Although we don't pay for all of these, I do feel a obligation to try to find voluntary benefits for our staff that are of very good quality and a very good price. So frequently we go out to RFP on these. We did that again this year and I'm very pleased with the results that came back and we're going to go through them. As I said, there's a lot of information here, so I'm certainly not going to go through every detail, but would be more than happy to answer questions when we're finished. The first item is actually a benefit that is available to all of our staff. It is our employee assistance program. And in case I don't say it often enough, I truly do appreciate this investment that you make in our staff every year. When I took this position, we didn't have an EAP and I learned in a hurry that we had a need for that because we did have counseling needs and just other support needs that our staff needed. But it's not always accessible through your health insurance. So this is a benefit that is supplied to all staff, their spouses and dependent children, whether they're living at home or not. It entitles them to six free counseling visits per life occurrence that they may feel they need some assistance with. And if you have one of those years where you have three major life events that are causing you.
Do we provide anything different than what we consider the standard kind of stuff?
Absolutely. Yes, they do.
And do we order anything from them like that or offer anything like that?
They are designating things like local, so we do get those kinds of local products. Some of the other catchphrases that you're hearing, like organic particularly, that means typically higher in price and we can get a comparable.
I was just curious if they even offered it.
Yes, they absolutely do. They have, you know, their own, they have to follow the trends as well. They're serving restaurants as well as, you know, schools and hospitals and healthcare, so.
In the change in administration, has there been any relaxing of guidelines?
There has not been anything that's made it to the floor so far. There's lots of talk.
Right.
But, and actually I do want to note that they're more concerned about farm bill. So that will get precedence over our child nutrition reauthorization. So we just sit tight and in the same holding pattern. All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from U.S. Food Service for the prime vendor for the 2017-18 school year with an option to renew for five additional years.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda is 2016-17 ridership counts. Dr. Brian Putten Gill.
Hello again. Well, our State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that the Board of Education of each school district approve regular ridership reports from October and February of each school year. A regular rider is any student who rides the bus at least once a week. Little background there. The attached reports in the board docs gives detailed information on which students are considered regular riders. Tonight, you are being asked to approve an amended version of our October report and then our report for February as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about those reports.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ridership reports for the 2016-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. And next is declare property as surplus property.
Very good. We have seven line items for your consideration, which are being recommended to be declared as surplus. I've visited with the high school administration about their items and our library books this month coming from Brighter Ridge have, have been chosen and for deselection based on a long list of criteria and they use their Destiny program. So I'd be happy to take any questions on that.
All right. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to declare the property presented a surplus.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes. Next agenda item, surplus property bid approval.
Last one. Five line items previously declared surplus have received, have received bids via our GovDeals program in the amount of $2,845. Each item is listed with the highest eligible bid for your consideration and approval.
Impressed trash compactor.
It's a large one. It's a bigger machine.
And I'm impressed French and Spanish books brought that much.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to declare the property presented, or excuse me, wrong one, to approve the bids for surplus property as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the Missouri School Boards Association Board of Director nomination.
Yeah, just a little context there. A month or two ago, we had Bruce's application or nomination form in front of you for the regional executive chair for our region four with MSBA. And that's the position she's currently in. Well, since then, we've had a development where Rhonda Gilstrap, who is a board member in Lee's, or excuse me, Blue Springs, that some of you may have met at conferences and so forth, is on the Board of Directors as a representative from this region. She's moving into the leadership chain as vice president, which opens up her seat for consideration for this region. And Ruth is interested in, in pursuing that. And she does a great job with all the MSBA activities and I'm very supportive of her nomination for that if the Board so chooses. And if she gets that, then that would supersede being, supersede being the regional chair and somebody else would need to put in for that. So this is filling a one-year remaining portion of Rhonda's term, if you will, if she's so selected.
Is there any discussion? So Ruth, I would like to personally thank you. Our district owes you significantly for all that you do with MSBA and all your legislative advocacy work. So I can't think of a better person for this position. So I would like to nominate you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the nomination of Ruth Johnson for MSBA Region Four Board of Director Representative.
Is there a second? All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Board policies.
We have a list of eight policies here. They were ones that were recommended to us by MSBA. They've been through the policy review committee process and had a first reading last month for us. There were a couple of them that we made minor edits to on our end, just to make them more RAPEC-specific, but otherwise pretty straightforward group. I'd be glad to entertain any specific questions you might have.
Any questions?
And apologize in advance, the next list you're going to see is much longer, so.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the policy, policies as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes. All right. Committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
The Innovation Committee is continuing to work on some projects that will go on with the high school this fall. And that's kind of what they're focusing on right now.
Any other committee reports? Citizens Advisory Committee, Matt, we're continuing to get lots of feedback.
Yeah, we kind of started the discussion on strategic planning, which is going to be a big topic for us, starting at our June retreat and carrying forward into next school year. So we kind of solicited a little bit of input from them on the front end.
And Policy Committee keeps meeting, but you get to see everything we work on with that.
And Team RAPEC, of course, you saw their recommendations this evening from a series of mini-meeting, so.
So everyone's active on committees. They're coming through as action items. So next is Superintendent comments.
Yeah, I want to start with mentioning on behalf of the entire district that I'd want to offer condolences to the Kowalizer's family. Obviously, losing a young person is always a very difficult thing for everybody. And I also want to thank our staff at the East Middle School and all the staff across the district that's reached out to help them for supporting our students and each other through this difficult time. Hopefully, we can look forward and think of more positive things. The first week of May is traditionally Teacher Appreciation Week. And now this year, it's a little unique in that with the first starting on a Monday, there's been some confusion about which week is it? Is it really the May 1st through the 5th or is it May 8th through the 12th? And depending on which website you look at, you'll get a different answer. Some of our buildings are doing recognition starting next week. I think the formal date is probably May 8th through 12th. That is when the district's going to do our staff recognition activity, which we, we do a breakfast for our staff members throughout the district and, and board members and administrators will be greeting staff during that time. So I would encourage anybody who may see this, that if, you know, if you have a minute, send out a word of thanks to a staff member that's been important to your student. They very much appreciate it. It's always a long school year and at this point in time, they need that extra support to kind of help us make it through. So thanks to all of our staff for what they do to, to help our students be successful. I also want to congratulate all of our nominations for PTA Volunteer of the Year. We had a great slate of folks nominated from across the district. The PTA Council had a very nice event this week to celebrate all those, all those folks. The winners were Jennifer Voliva from Peculiar Elementary and Kyle Burke from Timber Creek Elementary. I'm telling you, after you read what they've done for our students and staff, I don't know how you ever pick a winner. It's just amazing, some of the things they do to help make RAPEC and all of our schools, the families that they are for our students. And I also want to thank PTA Council for putting that recognition on. They really do a nice job with that, with that program. Also, related to some of our other service groups, I want to thank the Sunrise Optimists Club, the RAPEC, Raymore Peculiar Sunrise Optimists Club. They had the Academic Excellence Banquet last Sunday night and recognized over 50 of our students, which is always a very nice thing for their academic accomplishments. Of course, the Public School Foundation here at RAPEC sponsored our Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year Banquet recently. And so we want to congratulate Dan Garrison for being Teacher of the Year and Kristy Warren for being our Support Staff Employee of the Year. So we've got a lot of great partners with all these other organizations that, again, help make our, our school community great. A quick shout out to our Theater Department for winning yet another state title in Reader's Theater. I don't know how many of those they've won over the years, but there's a whole cabinet full of trophies out there at the high school. It was also nice to see KCPNL out here today working on relocation of power lines in preparation for the school road project. Of course, we didn't anticipate losing power for a few minutes. Had a pole kind of get away from them, but they got us back up and going very quickly. And so it's nice to see the progress that's hopefully going to lead to a successful final phase of the school road. And of course, our students and staff are working really hard now as they work through the whole state assessment process and entering into these final few weeks of our academic year. Our big celebration, of course, at the end of the year is our graduation ceremony on May 19th and really looking to over 400 students graduating and, and having that celebration with their families as they walk across the stage. And we're all looking forward to that. So I know it's a very exciting time for them and I know there's a few people in the room here that are going to be very excited with that and maybe a little sad, but that's okay. We, hopefully, we prepared them for their, their successful and meaningful life, just like the mission statement says. So with that, I conclude my remarks. Thanks.
All right. Next is Board of Education comments. Does anyone have some comments?
Well, he kind of stole a lot of the thunder talking about all the end-of-the-year stuff, the Excellence Banquet, the Volunteer of the Year. We've got some great kids and we've got a lot of great parents and community members. Timber Creek has a group from St. Paul's Church that has done phenomenal with volunteering. They went the other day and gave them a $400 check to pay for meal accounts that were behind. So that's a great partnership they've got going there. The Cass County Kids first, we had our mid-session breakfast a couple of weeks ago and session is going along. We're down to the crunch here. They passed a voucher bill out of the Senate today, so now we'll be watching to see where the House and Senate seem to merge on that. Walk through the building again was phenomenal. It was so cool to walk there, there and see it all coming together after looking at it on paper for so long.
Any other comments? I would just like to say, as a licensed mental health professional, the mental health and social health needs of our students is highly important to me. And I'm so proud to be a part of a district that takes that seriously and is being very proactive around that. And things like the committee that Dr. Al Volker is putting together on the Systems of Support, which has brought in many resources such as Children's Mercy, Crittenon, I, I think there's 20 various resources that are wanting to help our school provide for the variety of needs of our students, including mental health. So I'm grateful and proud to be a part of a district that already had that going before I came aboard and I'm excited to see how we can truly benefit our students. I'm excited to see what's coming down the pike on that, so. All right. Any other comments? Next thing we have is calendar of events. So we've got the Joint Cities Meeting coming up May 17th. Cass County is hosting that. Again, we've got graduation, May 19th. And then we've got a board meeting, a regular board meeting, May 25th.
I will just mention that the Joint Cities Meeting may get changed to a different date. That is our senior award night, so it's a lot of conflicts for some of us. So we will be reaching out to the county since they're the host of this meeting and seeing if they can switch the date with us.
All right. With all that being said, this meeting is adjourned.